This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Speak into the microphone, please, if you come up to talk. And assistive listening devices are available. Sila, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brillamentler.
Here.
Councilwoman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovir.
Here.
All right, we're going to start with our council reports, and today I'm going to start on my right and ask Councilwoman Kim Cho Han to please give us her report.
Okay, Mayor. Over in senior services, just want to remind everyone that the DMV mobile unit is open to all members of the community. It saves a trip to DMV. The mobile unit will be at the Community Center on July 23rd, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also want to remind everyone that Chinese newspapers are delivered daily to the Community Center. We also have a subscription with Spanish magazines as well. On July 8th, Monday, we will have our commu- at the Community Center, the Atlantic City Trip, and it's open to the public. Spaces are still available. And please check out our Facebook page for upcoming activities, events, and trips. Over in REC, you guys asked for it, and it's here, the online registration for our recreation programs. Visit HighlandParkREC.com. You can still pay in person, or you can pay online now. And it's that time again, fireworks in the park. Here's the stage lineup. 5:00 p.m., the activities will start with reading of the Declaration of Independence, 6:00 p.m., the Highland Park Youth Company Theater, 6:20, the Highland Park Municipal Band, 7:00 p.m., Rug Burn, and 7:45, Ray Anderson and the First Verse. 9:20, we will have the fireworks. And new this year's the Child's Play Challenge Course, and the course includes a rock wall, floating steps, a tire run, the cargo net, and much more. All participants are required to have a parent or guardian sign a waiver at the event. And for more details, you can visit their Facebook page, Highland Park NJ Recreation. The next Arts Commission meeting will take place Thursday, July 11th, 6:00 p.m. here at Borough Hall. The next Historic Commission meeting will take place Sunday, July 14th, at 1:15 at the Highland Park Public Library. Starting September, the Commission will meet the third Thursday of the month, 7:00 p.m. at Borough Hall, Lower Level Conference Room. And lastly, last month I attended Celebrate Middlesex. I also joined Mayor Gill and Councilwoman Foster Dublin at Congressman's Pallone, the Power of Women event with First Lady Murphy. The senior prom last month was splendid as usual. Thank you to the entire staff at the Community Center for putting this event together for 15 years and counting. So kudos to them. Later that evening, Zone 6 had their graduation party. If you haven't stopped by the Teen Center yet, please do so. I know Councilwoman Foster Dublin has mentioned this before as well. And last week, I was on Capitol Hill with Edison, Councilman Coyle, and the Indian Business Association for their Congressional Record. And I do want to remind everyone, because I guess I didn't get the reminder, that the plastic bag, the bring your own bag ordinance is in effect. I actually went to Stop &amp; Shop and forgot my bag and had to carry my chicken thighs out of the store, and it drip-juiced all in my car. So don't be like me, remember your bag. So I just wanted to remind everyone about that. Today is Third Good Marshall's Birthday, civil rights leader and first African-American Supreme Court Justice. And see you guys tomorrow at the fireworks. That's my report.
Thank you. And Stephanie, I just want to add, as Councilwoman Kim Cho Han mentioned, Ray Anderson will be performing at the fireworks, and he will be performing with some students of his, the song he wrote just for Highland Park, the Highland Park Unity Song. So I hope you'll be able to join us all there and sing along with him.
Mayor, I have a question for Councilwoman Kim Cho Han. The mobile unit for the DMV, what kind of services are they going to be providing?
Yes, so they're going to provide handy- hold on, I actually have the flyer. It's registration renewals, handicap renewal services. The mobile unit is ADA compliant, mostly everything that you would go to DMV for yearly, renewals and so forth, driver's license as well. But they will not take, I guess, driver's license tests there or anything of that nature. It's just the mobile unit to save your trip from going to DMV.
Okay. Councilman Hale, the long-awaited report.
Would that build up on? Thanks. I actually have a short report tonight. I wanted to acknowledge and address, we're going to be appointing two volunteers tonight. Harry Penajamian, who is known to many of you for his work at the Reform Church, is officially joining the Immigrant and Refugee Committee. He's been actually working with the committee for quite some time, so he's formally joining it or appointing to it. Regis Methuvian is also going to be reappointed to the Housing Authority tonight, and I just wanted to acknowledge both of them. They are the types of volunteers that roll up their sleeves and just get stuff done and get dirty getting stuff done, so I just wanted to recognize both of them. I also wanted to welcome and thank, we have a new member of the Highland Park Police Department, Matthew Buttermark, who joined as a transfer from the Asbury Park Police Department, who is a new member of the HP, and I wanted to welcome him as well. In terms of other announcements, I wanted to let people know that the Human Relations Commission and the Immigrant and Refugee Commission are partnering together for an event on July 9th, starting at 6:00 p.m., called Families March Together. So it's July 9th at 6:00 p.m., starting in the Irving School parking lot. The premises of this event is that regardless of where you come down on immigration, regardless of your thoughts about immigrants or immigrants and refugees, one of the things that ought to unite us is the idea that families, that mothers and fathers and sons and daughters belong together, and they do not belong separated. And so this is an attempt to draw attention to the fact that this is happening, and so there will be a gathering at the Irving School parking lot at 6 o'clock on July 9th. There'll be a march that will come over here, and there'll be some information about how to sign petitions on this issue and how also to get more active and more involved. So again, that's a joint Human Relations Commission and Immigrant and Refugee Commission, July 9th at 6 o'clock. The last thing I wanted to mention is Highland Park Gives a Hoot is a pretty amazing commission for the borough. This year, money that they've raised is going to go to over 22 scholarships for kids to go to summer camp that they pay for. They're going to, they're scheduled by the end of the summer to do 400 to 450 meals at the Global Grace Cafe that they pay for, that to kids who otherwise may not have a lunch. They also were instrumental along with the borough in getting a USDA reimbursement grant, which subsidizes also lunches over the summertime for kids in the summer camp. So it's a pretty amazing organization that is run on a shoestring and run on donations. They will be at the fireworks festival tomorrow night, and if you are there and someone is walking around with a can asking for donations, I just hope that everyone can dig a little bit deeper to support this great organization. They're always in need of fundraising, they're always in need of volunteers, and I think it's a great organization that we can be proud of. So that's my report.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to, for the agency on Will, sorry. The driving license, you can renew if you need to change your address, you're new in town as well, veterans' designations, register to vote, and your non-driver identification cards. You can surrender license plates, place cards, and examination plates. The flyer is out in the hallway as well on our bulletin board.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Wolkowitz, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor, and happy summer to everyone. Just a couple things. I'd also like to welcome Officer Buttermark. He was very impressive in the interview process that we had with him. I'm a member of the Public Safety Team as well, so we're delighted that he's joining us. And just a super congratulations to Lieutenant Panacella, and I'm sure the mayor and Councilwoman Foster Dublin will speak more about this, but after 42 years, our lieutenant, homegrown, retired, and the police department put on a tremendous ceremony to honor him, and it was a pleasure to be there and to join in that this past Friday. Just a few other things. On June 18th, we had a wonderful meeting here in Council Chambers to our public on our bicycle and pedestrian recommendations for a plan, and that was a grant that we received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation, where they provided the engineering services of WSP, a preeminent consulting and planning firm. And they've been working for the past year with us in large public meetings and in smaller focus groups, and they came up with a wonderful plan. Check our website, please, it's on there. We would love to have more comments from you as well. Comments can be sent to our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. They have a special email account, it's hpswacc@gmail.com. It was a wonderful meeting. We had the auditorium filled, much like it is today. Well, we had more people. And it was a pouring thunderstorm outside, so I'm just so delighted that people really made it, and it was a great discussion. So please take a look at it, and that's going to eventually become part of our master plan. And these are recommendations, so we're still discussing it, but as each phase, as we progress with each phase, we'll be presenting that to the planning board. So we're very excited to bring about some more pedestrian and bicycle safety for our community. Huge congratulations to Main Street Rebecca Hirsch and Javier Zavala. Worked super quickly on a last-minute grant opportunity. We were just awarded $25,000 from- $25,000, yes, did I say that? Thank you, Rebecca, from the New Jersey Department of Consumer Affairs. It's the Main Street New Jersey District Transformation Grant, and it's to remake the entrance of our farmer's market into more of a downtown square with a large pavilion, some paving, bicycle fixtures, thanks to our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, who purchased a bicycle fix-it station, which will be installed there sometime this year, more public art, and more things. Now, many of these concepts, we worked, although we had been thinking about them, but we also recently worked with the grad students from Rutgers Blasting School of Planning and Public Policy, and that we're finalizing that program as well. But if you remember, we had on the corners of Raritan and Third and Raritan and Fourth, we had some stations, and we had, the students were out, and they were talking with our residents about what kinds of things residents would like to see on these corners, and we defined some space with some nice blue sails. Some of them created a sort of shade spot where people sat down. In fact, five minutes after we put up the first shade just to test it, somebody was already sitting under it. So we're trying to make additional placemaking pieces, low-cost pieces throughout the borough to attract more people, and we hope that that also helps improve economic development and a more vibrant downtown. And tonight we'll be approving the Main Street budget, we talked about that last time here too. And again, our farmer's market, which is open Fridays beginning at 11:00 a.m., it runs through December. There's at least a special once a month, and it's open until at least 6:00 or 6:30 at night for that. Music on the corners every Friday evenings from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. in the months of June, July, and August. And in addition to Highland Park's fireworks celebration, please join us at a tremendous event or events that the county is sponsoring. Two years ago, I went to Revolutionary War reenactments, and they're doing it again all week long. It started on the 30th, and it goes through Saturday, July 6th. In fact, the entire day, they have things, on Thursday, July 4th, they have an entire day of stuff, including our own Dr. Chris Rasmussen will be speaking on Women in the Revolution. That's beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the Christ Church Cemetery, 5 Patterson Street, and then at the East Jersey Old Town, all day, Benjamin, Meet Benjamin Franklin, Baron von Steuben, and George Washington. So they'll have real historians dressed as these actors. It's a wonderful, wonderful event. I biked down there with my kids, and it was a great day, so I encourage everybody to do that. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Well, welcome summer finally, not too much rain. Just want to report on that the Highland Park Police Department Youth Academy training will begin on July 7th through the 12th, and they have a robust program planned, anyone who's interested. On the 12th, we will be having the graduation. It will be here in Borough Chambers at that date at 11:00 a.m. All is invited to attend. The Highland Park community, we had decided that we were going to have community forums quarterly, and the quarterly community forum will be on July 30th here in Council Chambers at 7:00 p.m. So we will be posting this on the Highland Park Police website. We post it throughout the borough, so anyone with any kind of concerns and that want to come out and speak to our police department, the forum will be July 30th at 7:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. August is National Night Out, so on August 13th, we'll be having our National Night Out here in Highland Park, down by the old Charlie Brown's, which is now the Blue Horse Restaurant. So please come out. That activity starts about 5:00 p.m. Come out and support. We will keep a lot of you, we'll keep all this information updated on our Facebook page and also on our website. In keeping in mind with summer, we have to be aware that there's a lot of heat strokes that can be had in the summer, such as exhaust and strokes. We have to be concerned with bug safety, children's safety, fireworks safety, water safety, bicycling, skateboarding, and pedestrian safety, and teen education. On the Highland Park Police Department website, they'll have information about all the safety tips that we need to have at our disposal to keep us all safe. I would also like to mention that we're, Highland Park Community Center, when the weather, it gets really, really hot, that there'll be a cooling center available at the Highland Park Community Center. So those days when the weather is too hot to stay in your home, and for those who don't have air conditioning, the cooling center will be available over at our community center. I also want to welcome Officer Buttermark. He came in, and he was very impressive in the interview, and to see more about him, learn some more, please go to the Highland Park Police Department website, and they'll have a write-up about the new officer there. And we have a new officer come in, we have our old officer Gary Panacella. After 41 years of service, he retired this past Friday, and it was a great turnout by the community. So many people came out to say goodbye to Gary. He is truly a Highland Park treasure, because he has gone above and beyond in many ways to support our community. Most of the time when he does support, he always have me swear to secrecy, say, "Do not tell anyone." But over the years that we've been having the Christmas dinners, giving away bicycle helmets, or giving ice cream scholarships, grants, or anything like that to kids here in Highland Park, anyone who's in need, Gary has always been there to support. So he truly will be missed, and I'm quite sure we'll see him around town helping out in some way or the other. Our Zone 16 Teen Center, they had a lot going on this year. For example, last month in June, they had a celebration of accomplishments, and they had seniors that were graduating from the high school, they had a senior prom for them. They also gave out free haircuts to students that were in need of haircuts, and a special thanks to A.J. Hawkins for providing haircuts for those who were in need. They also run Learn How to Speak series, and this was facilitated by Frank Abril Solutions and Grade for Fair and Public Speaking and Leadership Development Program. So they're doing a lot with our teens at the Teen Center. They also had an art show, and the student displayed their artwork, and they had some really good art that if you have an opportunity to stop by the Teen Center, there's still some of the artwork on display. They celebrated the first class of seniors, as I said before, and it was really a wonderful celebration with a family-style dinner, and people came in to congratulate them, and they're off, the seniors are off, and they're going to be in great hands, because prior to them leaving, they were offered financial literacy workshop earlier during the year. And speaking of that, they're going to be another financial literacy workshop that's going to be in August, that's going to be provided as well. The other thing that they're doing this coming summer, they're going to be a trip to Philly, there's going to be a trip to New York Museum, they're going to be visiting historical Black colleges, and as I said, financial literacy training, and a trip to Dave and Buster. There's going to be a waterball sport activity on July 10th, there's going to be movies, such as Men in Black. And as usual, we want to thank Panera Bread for making every Monday Panera Bread Day that they donate items to our Zone 16 Teen Center. And that's my report.
So I just want to add something to your report on the Teen Center. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, I just learned the other day when I went to the HP Gives a Hoot meeting over at the church, that at the Teen Center, in cooperation with the Methodist Church, they've been giving out 50 loaves of bread a week.
Yes.
So the church is collecting it, and the teenagers know they can go to the Teen Center to pick up bread for their family for the week, and that's also a wonderful thing they're doing there.
Yes. And Panera Bread has been a wonderful partner in helping out. Every Monday, they do a delivery to us in many ways.
Councilwoman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mayor. I just have one item to share. I'm pleased to report that the mayor and I will be meeting with Governor Murphy's co-shared services czar, Jordan Glatt, in East Brunswick with other Middlesex County mayors on July 18th, and at that July 18th meeting, we are going to explore potential shared services that the municipalities participating in the meeting may partner together on, with the hopes that it will help us to try to stabilize our property taxes. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor, thank you. I wish everybody a happy 4th of July and an enjoyable holiday. But in joining in that holiday, glad to report that DPW, with the wonderful weather that we've been having after we got done with the monsoon season, have been out patching and filling potholes. We hit 260 of the targets on the list, including many people had asked about Cherry and Bernard, which were done last week. A reminder, though, for some people have been putting out bulk trash, and it may be because of move-outs from apartments, but just a reminder, the next bulk trash is not this summer, it is in September, in the week following the townwide yard sale, which is going to be September 17th through the 19th. So just a reminder, that's the bulk trash. We did relocate it last year to make it coincide with the week after the townwide yard sale. A reminder, we got a notice from the county that on July 25th through the 30th, they're going to be doing road paving and milling up on Woodbridge Avenue in one of the blocks to repair some of the roadway, so that it will be a little bit inconvenient, but we'll get a lot of work done. They'll be striping it around the 29th and the 30th, so it would be done by then. Following up on the implementation of the new one-armed collection garbage truck, I spoke with DPW this morning. The routes have been finalized, and it does look, based upon our measuring of that actual tonnage over the last month, that we will actually be able to expand the routes. But as for right now, we're going to leave them set the way they are so that we can actually make sure and see how the routes actually navigate. The new truck is rather large. It's a 31 cubic yard truck, so it's rather large. You may have gotten a letter, if you're on the proposed route, about 1,200 letters went out suggesting what the routes will be, the approximate implementation time. However, if you have any questions, several people have called. The letter at the top of the letter is wrong. The letter for DPW's contact for the disposal routes is in the body of the letter, which is the actual DPW address. I'm pleased to announce for the, on behalf of the borough, that tonight's, one of the ordinances on for first reading is a capital equipment lease ordinance with the County Improvement Authority. We are finally getting our electric vehicles, we're getting two electric inspectors vehicles and two hybrid police vehicles, which is a big start that we've been pushing for for some years. That coincides with the free-up of the Volkswagen diesel scam money that New Jersey has. We have application in for two double-charging stations as well to service those. So hopefully, they're going to coincide with each other. Sustainable Highland Park is meeting on the 24th at their regular meeting. We've been working on an anti, amendment to our anti-idling ordinance. It will focus not just generally, but on some target areas, large areas where people tend to idle to reduce pollution, especially in this area when you're getting humidity and inversions. If you sit in a parking lot for more than a minute where cars and trucks are idling, you can see the damage that can cause. And finally, the Meadows Trail volunteers are putting together the River Walk. There'll be a boardwalk crossing down to an old, old, old trail that was along the river. They're going to be reopening that with some grants and donations. However, if you know the heavy end of a hammer and the pointy end of a nail, they can use some volunteers who can actually help with that work, and use, and some regular volunteers to fill in the crews. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report tonight?
Just a few items. Just wanted to, just popular topics. The website, we've executed contract with Granicus, which is the web developer, and we have our kickoff meeting with our project manager. I'm also really pleased that the Public Information Committee is going I'm also really pleased that the Public Information Committee is going to be doing some community outreach to try to make sure that the website's as relevant to our constituency as possible. So hopefully, you'll hear from them or hear about their progress as that moves forward. But we're really pushing hard to get this up and running before the end of the year. So it's an aggressive timeline. The deer survey, I just wanted to give an update. As I mentioned previously, we had drone counts, we had drone flyover of the borough, but that contractor, for lack of a better term, basically ran into some managerial problems. We never got a report. We didn't pay for a report, which is the good news. The bad news is, we're calling around for other proposals, and I even confirmed this with the Division of Fish and Wildlife. They do not recommend doing a drone count of deer in town until after the leaves has fallen off the trees because the visibility is poor. So that's going to delay the data collection, and it's going to delay our ability to do the outreach that we had hoped to do with the community by several months. So we're making our plans now so we can have the contract lined up when the weather is appropriate and the trees are defoliated. But there will be a further delay just due to the timing that we're in right now. So I wanted to make that as clear as possible. And Councilman George mentioned the pothole repair crew has been out, and I just wanted to mention that we did have our kickoff with our road contractor, which was just recently awarded for North Third, South Seventh, Maryland and Hilton. And we were also recently awarded from the state funding for Cherry and South Adelaide, as well as South Park Ave. So we will be rolling out, and we're in the process of applying in July for the next round of roads for state aid. So we are aware of the road conditions, and we're working as fast as we can. Unfortunately, it takes a while to do procurement and gathering the grant funds, but we appreciate everybody's patience with us as we catch up to the roads.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to remind the residents that on Monday, July 15th at nine o'clock, before Judge McCluskey over in the Superior Court, the borough will present a final compliance plan for its affordable housing program through the year 2025. Any resident is welcome to attend. I believe Judge McCluskey is in Chambers 305 at the courthouse in New Brunswick.
Thank you. I too want to weigh in on the retirement of longtime Highland Park Police Officer Gary Panacella. Gary served, as was mentioned, for 41 years. He saw lots of changes happen in Highland Park, and he was responsible for so many of the positive changes that occurred here. It was hard to see him go, but he's still in town, and I'm sure that he'll find a way to continue to work for the benefit of all our residents. All right, we're going to enter into the first public discussion session. Each speaker, at this point of the meeting, we are only limited to three speakers. Three minutes, five speakers each, because this period is only a 15-minute period. There will be a second public comment session that can go longer. Going to ask the Borough Administrator to please help us out and time each person. So when you step up to the microphone, please state your name and address.
David Lowenstein, 116 South Fourth Avenue, Highland Park. Good evening. As you are probably aware, somewhere within the past 14 to 15 months, your governing body has seen fit to take us, the Highland Park First Aid Squad, out of service 60 hours a week. That is, Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Since that time, the mayor and council has requested several pieces of information from the squad, as well as promising the squad some information on their end. To date, and well before this date, the squad has turned over every bit of information requested by the governing body. Unfortunately, the same cannot be said about the borough. We were told that we would have a new emergency operating plan, which is still woefully overdue. We were told we would have ID badges. Apparently, the machine is not repairable, and a new machine is not in the budget. We were told of sensitivity classes and information that would be provided to the squad. To date, all we have been given is a computer-generated presentation to watch. Finally, we had background checks done on all our members. My guess is that since we have heard no feedback, all our members have passed. We have met with members of the Public Safety Committee several times, and at each of these meetings, we have begged the committee to allow us to volunteer our time, and each time, the answer has been, "We will see." On a Wednesday night in June, our town was prepared for a possible rally, which would have potentially, which had the potential to turn violent. In order to prepare the EMS side, our squad was able to secure almost 15 ambulances to be on standby, as well as another three from outside Highland Park, including Bergenfield. Why Bergenfield, you might ask? Because they do not bill for their services. This is how important it is to us that our residents do not get bills. Included in this preparation was a written handbook given to all visiting squads, which included details such as directions to hospitals, important phone numbers, instructions on how to use our radio system, and how to contact our medics if need be, to name a few. I want everyone to realize that this was all done free of charge to the town of Highland Park. I can assure you, no paid service would do any of this for free. At the last council meeting, you voted down the RFP for Robert Wood. We again asked you to allow us to go back in service. We even offered you two additional compromises. One, instead of waiting seven minutes to begin mutual aid protocol, we suggested wait four minutes, hit our pages again, and at the same time, initiate mutual aid protocol. Two, we would call dispatch every morning and let them know we had a crew available for the day so that they should page us out first. Once again, the only answer we've gotten after almost another month has gone by is we have to have a meeting to discuss this. Tell me, when was your meeting to discuss taking us out of service? Finally, in the last two weeks alone, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., there was an ambulance call at the Irving School directly across the street from our building. And all our crew, which was in the building, could do is wait for Robert Wood to show up coming from East Brunswick and bill the patient. Then we had a fire call, which was actually a gas leak in an apartment complex. We notified the chief on scene. We had a crew in the building if needed. Shortly after the fire, a marshal arrived. He requested from our dispatch that an ambulance be sent to the scene. Again, Robert Wood was notified.
David, I would like to hear the rest of your letter, but the three-minute time has...
I have less than a paragraph to go. Less. "To our governing body, why are you so hell-bent on your constituents and our neighbors being billed for services which we believe we perform as well, if not better? And best of all, no bills to our residents and friends."
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Arnie. I live at 130 North Sixth Avenue. I saw the clerk reports about the amendment to the handicap parking ordinance is on the roster for tonight, and I hope that when you get to that, instead of just mentioning it and then doing the roll-call vote, that you could explain what that amendment might be. I'd like to explain my perspective on that. There was a Facebook flurry or a kerfuffle when one of the residents of Highland Park was very concerned that she could never find handicap parking in her apartment complex parking lot. And she believed that it was up to the supervisor, the super of the apartment complex, to enforce that handicap parking place location. But it turns out, it's up to the Highland Park Police. And it was only after I sort of tagged Jose Corbello, and thankfully, he wrote right back, and he said, "Call the police department. She did, and they ticketed that offending person who kept using that." I would just like to understand, A, are there statutory and/or local requirements for the number of parking places in apartment building lots or shopping center lots in Highland Park? And is there any sort of regular cruising by the police force to make sure that those are being properly used?
Okay, so I'm going to ask Councilwoman Foster Dublin if she could respond?
Yes. The ticketing, or the enforcing, I should say, of the parking lot rules are done by our police department. If someone is parked illegally in one of those spots, the police department should be called, and they will do the proper enforcement. We do have signage for, in public and quasi-private, I guess, apartment would be about where people can park, and there is a designated number of parking spaces, handicap parking spaces that is given out. On the private residence on our streets, there are, if you're in need of a parking space, you can submit a request to have a, but it has to be reviewed. It's not, it has to be reviewed, and then that it would be, if it's deemed in that area that is appropriate, then a parking space would be, a handicap parking space would be put in place if it's deemed. However, and this is the big part of it, that it's not designated to one person. Anyone who has a handicap decal can use that space. What I have seen over the years is that people from other areas may come in, and they are in need of that spot, and they do use it. And if, I've gotten repeated requests from one resident in particular saying that somebody's using the parking space, and she keeps referring it to as "my" parking space, but it's anyone who's in need of a handicap parking space can use that space. We cannot designate a spot to an individual. That just cannot be done. I forgot, the other part of your question was?
That's pretty much covered, except I was wondering if the police maybe cruise by the various handicap spots to make sure that they're being properly used?
As a person who's in charge of municipal court, yeah. And people come into the court system very angry, and we said, you know, you have people that come in and say, "I have a decal, but it wasn't displayed." How would they know? You know, you have to display your decal, or they'll come in, they'll bring a decal in and say, "Here's my decal. It wasn't displayed at the time of the ticketing." So, yes, so enforcement is in place by the police department.
Thank you very much.
I just want to ask Councilman Hale, and I know Tara is standing right there. Do you have anything you want to add? And Tara is the Chair of Universal Access.
I was going to say, if you do call, because I call every time I see somebody parked there, the police are there in less than two, three minutes, and they do ticket the cars. I do see them also patrolling, but as residents of the town, if you see it, call the non-emergency number, and they will come. And the added benefit is, normally on handicap parking tickets, half the money would go to the state. We have an ordinance where all the money stays in town. So call, please.
Thank you. Okay, please state your name and address.
Tara Hanifara, 361C, Crowls Road. Gary definitely earned his right to retire, but as we all know, he was more than just a lieutenant here in town. He held multiple hats. One of them was, he was our ADA coordinator. And I just wanted to remind the borough, it's very important that you appoint somebody as soon as possible to fill that role.
Thank you. We will be doing that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Clerk, could you please report on advertising a notification of Main Street Highland Park 2019 Budget for Consideration of Passage on Final Reading by Title?
The 2019 Main Street Highland Park Budget was introduced and approved on first reading on June 11, 2019. A summary was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on Friday, June 14, 2019, with public hearings scheduled for July 2, 2019. Copies of the budget were made available to the public in Borough Hall and at the Highland Park Library.
Okay. May I have a motion to take up the Main Street Highland Park Budget on Final Reading by Title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any public hearing on it? May I have a resolution to adopt the Main Street Highland Park 2019 Budget on Final Reading by Title? Motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin? Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
And thanks again to our Main Street Director Rebecca Hirsch for all your fine work, and for your staff as well. And yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you report on advertising the overlay zoning ordinance for consideration of passage on Final Reading by Title?
An ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County Creating a Multi-Family Residential Overlay Zone," duly advertised for consideration of passage on Final Reading by Title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, and Borough Attorney, could you please update us on the modifications that are in this revised amended ordinance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd also suggest we invite Chris Cessenza, who is our planning consultant. Perhaps go over to the microphone, and he can work through these various changes. The ordinance is now up for a public hearing. It's the ordinance creating the overlay zone for Buck Woods that was introduced on June the 11th. After the ordinance was introduced, the ordinance was referred to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board took the ordinance up on Thursday, June 13th. As a result of considering the ordinance that evening, the Planning Board has sent a resolution, or has adopted a resolution, which recommends several minor changes to the ordinance, which Chris is prepared to review as a result of the presentation made at the Planning Board and the comments made by residents at that Planning Board meeting. So Chris will go through some of those changes, or all of those changes, actually. And then there are some other minor adjustments which we found were necessary in the ordinance as well. For example, we don't know if the construction on Buck Woods will be an ownership project, meaning that condominium units would be built, and that there would be a homeowners' association, or whether or not this would be a rental project. And if it was a rental project, it would be owned by someone. We'll call him the landlord. Right now, our ordinance says, with regard to the open space to the rear of the building, it would be the homeowners' association responsibility, not the borough's, to take care of that property. But if this was a rental unit, a rental project, rather, then that responsibility would shift over to the owner of the rental unit, or we'll call him or her the landlord. So I think Chris has a number of changes that he can review. Our recommendation would be, after reviewing these on the record and conducting a public hearing, that if the mayor, if the council, rather, is inclined to adopt the ordinance, that they adopt it as amended with these various changes that Chris will put in the record. Chris?
Thank you. Can you hear me good? I'm pretty soft-spoken. So how many of you were here on the introduction meeting or the Planning Board meeting with the digital presentation? Okay, thank you. So first, I'll start with the changes that were recommended at the Planning Board. There were four of them, and I'll just go through each of them briefly. First is regarding the setbacks on the sides of the building. Basically, the rear yards to the South Seventh and South Fifth. The original plan had allocated setbacks of 30 feet and 50 feet, and what we heard loud and clear from the council, Planning Board, as well as members in the public, was to, for the purpose of equity, can we equalize them? So what we've done here is to do just that and recommend to take that 80-foot combined setback and just split it in the middle. It'll be 40 feet on each side. Ordinance change number two is relative to the height of the building. The height of the building is not changing, but what we are doing for the purposes of the ordinance is to clarify, it is a three-story building, or should appear to be a three-and-a-half story building. And what that intent was, is that it should look like a three-and-a-half story building, which means three stories and a roof with dormers, on the visible portions of the project, which is generally on the northeast and west sides. A portion of the building on the interior courtyard, which is in the middle of the building, which doesn't face any neighbors, that can be four stories. That's not an issue. It's not a problem. No one's really going to see it. As well as the portion of the building facing the wooded area in the south, that could be four stories as well. That doesn't really change the ordinance, it just provides clarification for the purposes of when we review the application of site plan. Change number three is regarding open space. Previously, the ordinance required a minimum distance of 50 feet to be considered open space. Now, when we changed the setbacks to 40 feet, we have to make that change so they align. So that's change number three. The last change recommended by the Planning Board was to acknowledge and clarify... The last change recommended by the Planning Board was to acknowledge and clarify that we will be permitting stoops entry platforms, basically entrances to the first floor of a building. Generally along the open space areas, which could be on either side, but mainly we're talking about along the trail side, will be allowed to project into the, the side yard setback of 40 feet, which is a common projection in zoning ordinances. So those were the four changes that were recommended by the Planning Board. It's been a series of, not really a series, there's only a few other changes that we would suggest as part of the adopted ordinance, and that would be, as the council has indicated, is to clarify, if the building is a rental project, the landlord or the owner of the building is responsible for maintaining open space. That's one of them. There was two other changes that were in discussion, and that was to take certain portions of the ordinance, specifically open space M2. Let me scroll down. So in the ordinance, we have an allowance for a multi-use trail to be part of the open space, and that's well intended, but then you get the issue of calculation in previous coverage. Right now, what this ordinance states is that the open, the trail may be excluded from the calculation in previous coverage. We're just gonna clarify, it just shall be. And so we're gonna change the word "may" to "shall," and that last phrase, at the sole discretion of the approving authority, to be stricken. The same thing is regarding the steep, the stoops and the entrance platforms. They may be permitted, they shall be permitted, instead of being at the, subject to review of the approving authority. So those two changes, just stating more clear that they are permitted. The last change I want to talk about is regarding, a conversation I've had with council was there was some comments about, can we take those, thank you for the 40-foot setbacks, comments we're hearing from setbacks, well, can we get them narrower? And I must say that those are good comments, and it's hard to understand, like, why we got to that with the building, why can't it be narrower? So what I do want to explain is that it is difficult to make that building even narrower because of, what we're trying to do is get all the parking under the building. And in order to do that, you need a certain width, typically 60-foot bays, that's 180 feet. Then you have to structure the building, because in a structure, you don't want the columns hitting the cars, so that you need additional feet for that, as well as allowing for the, the ins and outs of the building on the side. So what that does, it creates a building footprint that is pretty rigid, and it's in the ordinance to suggest 40-foot setbacks. You can't do 50-foot setbacks, but there certainly is opportunities to increase 40, to say 42 or 43, 44 feet, perhaps. That's something I would, my professional opinion is for that to be done at site plan and negotiation and the design of the building, because the building hasn't been designed. So preferred, we keep the setbacks at 40 feet, but to acknowledge the residents' requests to allow for that to happen, what we do need to do is, if we want to reshape the building, basically narrowing it and extending it to achieve the same square footage as permitted, I would recommend, as a final change, is to reduce the 200-foot setback to 180. The 20-foot reduction in setback allows the building to shift a little bit more, allows for the change in shape if it is possible, and I think acknowledge some of the concerns. We try to get the building further away from north, it's just so it could allow for the building to shift, reshape a little bit, but still meets the purposes of the square footage that is being sought and allowed by the ordinance. And the other reason for 180 instead of some other number is because at that point, generally is where you really start to get some steep slopes. So that is the summary of all the changes, and I would recommend that the ordinance be adopted with those changes by the Planning Board, recommended by the Planning Board, and those three other changes I just spoke on the record.
Thank you for that, Chris, and I, I just want to add that, or emphasize the fact that this is an overlay zoning. It is not the actual design that, we did not go into designing the building. That is something that the developer is going to have to do, and all of the details involved with a design will be discussed at the Planning Board whenever it is submitted. Okay?
May I have a question?
Yes.
One of the concerns of the residents was about emergency vehicles, say a fire truck. Could you explain that?
Sure, so the-
What was taken into consideration for that?
Yes, that was taken into consideration, and that's why we had a, the 40-foot setback is more generous than you would normally see on other residential lots, typically to 20 feet. So what we're recommending for 40 feet is double that, and since that's the minimum, the building can be deeper if necessary when we go to site plan. And that is intended to allow for, if we do receive any comments from Public Safety and Fire Department, we can add that, a couple extra feet if they need to, and allow for that building get longer, will allow the developer to recapture that square footage that's lost by narrowing it. But the idea is that we believe 40 feet is sufficient. It's basically a narrow street, and you have the retaining wall, final locations can be adjusted to allow for the fire truck access. The intention is to get, build, the Fire Department and Public Safety apparatus to enter the site from South 6th and be able to use the trail, which is gonna be designed as a paved area that looks like a trail, but also has some, some sort of material that allows for the fire trucks to drive on, on the sides of the trail, to drive along the entire side and to the rear of the building. So they can basically get to all three sides. Now, this plan has the old 30 and 50-foot setbacks, so when we do go to site plan with the 40-foot setbacks on either side, we can explore having the entire building surrounded by some sort of trail. But the idea is to have at least three sides available for fire safety. In terms of the sprinkler systems already in the ordinance, that the building is to be at the standard, that's basically the highest standard, which is NFPA 13R, which is a higher standard, which basically means that the sprinklers must go through the cavities of the building. Normally, they point down, but we're saying they have to go up too, which is a much greater protection system.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, can I have a motion to take the, up the ordinance as amended on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt as amended. Oh, I'm sorry, motion to take up ordinance as amended.
Public hearing.
That comes after the motion.
Sorry.
It's okay, you guys. I got this.
She got it.
Okay, there was a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's a public hearing?
Hayden Shum, 411 South 5th Avenue. I just wanted to say, thank the town and the planner and for taking our considerations into account. I know a tremendous amount of work is put into it. I mean, it's not a perfect plan, but I think that our, our concerns, most of our concerns have definitely been heard. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Lapidus, 420 South 7th.
I just have a couple of questions regarding the compliance issues with, with the way the site is gonna be built. Nobody talked about the 40-foot setbacks and the distance. I want to know at what point will the measurements be taken to make sure that it is in compliance with, with what the borough is recommending?
Well, as the mayor indicated, that would take place when a, an actual plan is prepared and submitted to the Planning Board for what's called site plan approval. And there'll be public hearings on that. So that they, we would start with taking a look at the plan that was developed around this ordinance to make sure that it met the 40 feet, 40-foot requirement.
What I meant was, then, how can I phrase this right? At what point do they actually make sure that what the contractor is building matches what you, is actually on paper in the site plan?
Well, during the construction process, we have inspectors that go out to check to make sure that what is being built is on the plan and is on the approved plan. So somebody actually goes out with a tape measure and will figure out the distance to make sure the distance is met.
Okay. So if, for instance, the, what you put on paper, and then your inspector goes out and he finds that it's actually 35 feet, what happens at that point?
Well, if they did it wrong, there would be a stop-work order issued, and then you'd have to meet, we would meet with the developer to see how it could be corrected. If somebody just laid a line of, of blocks down and they could be moved, obviously that's what would happen. So we would instruct them to move it to 40 feet, not 35, and that could be done. So it's monitored as they lay the foundation, just to make sure that you don't put a wall up before somebody realizes that it's too close. So it'll be, it'll be picked up right at the very beginning, as soon as the first improvements go in the ground.
Is there some sort of built-in safeguard that, that what, you know, that the, there's some teeth to the ordinance, and that if in fact that it's not met, that if the building is too high, or if it's too close to either side, then that it can be rectified in a legal, you know, rectified without it being like, oops, sorry?
Well, well, the ultimate penalty which the borough has would be to knock down the building. In other words, if, if it went too high, if it went too close, if it was caught and they were told to do something different, and they didn't do it, we would put a stop-work order on it, we get a court order, we have them knock down the building.
Okay. The other one I, is a question, I guess, for the planner, is, is there a minimum amount of distance between the end of the properties facing on South 5th and South 7th and the start of the retaining wall?
Just so I'm clear, can you just point on the map?
So is there, there's gonna be a retaining wall, so is there a minimum amount of distance between the end of our property and the start of what we're gonna do?
So the ordinance has a minimum distance of 10 feet, but there's also, just for clarity, a provision in that same section that states that the, ultimately, the engineer, borough engineer, has the authority to determine the final location. If it addresses some other special need or circumstance that necessitates the retaining wall be a little bit closer for whatever reason, or further away. But generally, setback is 10 feet from the property line.
Last thing I just want to comment on is, I want to thank the planner for all the hard work he's done, and everyone on the council for listening to us. But I just, from my discussions with the Planning Board and with the council, it seems that a lot of the building, the way the building shaped up was due to constraints that the Planning Board was operating under, and the Planning Board was thinking that open space was a priority. And I, there was a comment last time that we went to the Planning Board, when someone said, on the Planning Board said, if it's not a priority, maybe we should revisit it. And I would urge the council and the Planning Board to actually revisit that philosophy, because not everyone feels the same way about open space. I think our, we need to actually look at open space more in long lines of what is the quality of the open space and at what cost? The cost here seems to be a very tall building and making a clear line between has and haves-nots. And the quality of the open space, we're talking about 200 feet, now we're talking about 180 feet of very marginal land, which will probably be underwater every time it rains. So I think instead of just looking at open space as the Holy Grail, it really needs to be looked at more of like, more of a balance of the pros and cons. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have, okay. May I have a motion to adopt or, or reject the modified and amended overlay zoning and advertise the ordinance on final reading?
Motion to adopt the modified and amended? Amended?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'm hoping that this is the beginning of the end of the, all of the controversies over Buck Woods. And while it may not seem to be the greatest solution, we've heard many solutions and many problems over the last 20 years, and I believe that this finally brings it to an end, with the community having been involved over the last six months, especially to reach these final resolutions. I vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
And I just want to thank the residents for coming out and for being organized and providing real thoughtful comments, which I think we were able to incorporate as much as we could. I'd like very much to thank our planners, Chris Cessenza and Jim Constantine. You guys really were listening to what the residents had to say. I'm a resident too, although they're living right next to it, so I really value what their ideas are and what their comments are. It's difficult, it's, it's, as much as we can try to imagine it, we didn't really catch the 50/30, you know? So, so thank you for coming out and paying attention to that. And, and yeah, Chris and Jim did a tremendous job in, in coming up with these, these different variations as we progressed through this. It's been, it's been years in the making, and thanks to our borough administrator too for, for spearheading this. It's been, it's been a tremendous thing. So yes, thank you. That was a yes. Yes, that was a yes.
Okay.
Do I get to vote?
So, so- Does Matt get to vote?
I missed you, sorry. Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Depends what your vote is.
Borough Attorney, before we get to the next two, do you want to just explain what these next two are?
Yes, let me just mention, on the agenda this evening, items 11 and 12 are two earlier drafts of the ordinance that was just adopted. And they were introduced, and there were public hearings, and a number of folks came and spoke, and as a result of that, changes were made. But we did technically continue the public hearing on the ordinance which we, which council introduced on April the 2nd and also on April the 16th. So we technically have to have a hearing again tonight on these two ordinances, which I believe you could do at the same time. And then after that public hearing, in order to be consistent with the ordinance you just adopted, I would recommend that these two earlier ordinances be considered for rejection.
But we need to introduce them separately?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let me try this one. Clerk, could you report on advertising the overlay zoning ordinance introduced April 2nd, 2019, for consideration of passage on final reading of title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County creating a multifamily residential overlay zone was duly advertised for consideration of final passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject this ordinance on final reading by title?
Madam Mayor, we should ask if there's any public comment, because technically it's a public hearing.
Okay. Any public comment on this?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to reject.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes, to reject.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes, to reject.
Okay, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the overlay zoning ordinance introduced April 16th, 2019, for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County creating a multifamily residential overlay zone was duly advertised for consideration of final pass, passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading by title?
Public hearing. Public hearing.
You can make a motion to-
Okay, motion to reject?
Second.
Any public hearing? May I have a resolution to adopt or, I'm sorry?
Sorry.
A resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to reject.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes, to reject.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes, to reject.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes, to reject.
Okay. I'd also like to thank all the residents who participated in this very long and agonizing process for all of us. And I, I also want to thank the borough attorney and the borough administrator for their steadfast commitment to getting us the best we can do for this piece of property. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the handicap parking ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residencies occupied by handicapped persons and amending the code of the borough of Highland Park 2010 was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to take up.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? All right. May I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Uh, just want to add that this is the, the ordinance we spoke about earlier and the enforcement that goes into, if someone is parked illegally into a handicap parking space, that you can call the police department and someone will come out and, and enforcements will be done. And that enforcement continues to happen when people are parked illegally in handicap parking spaces. And these parking spaces are not designated to just one person. Anyone with a decal can park in those spaces. And with that, I vote yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
I vote yes, too.
I say, Councilman George.
Yes.
I say, Councilman George.
Okay, clerk, could you please report on introduction of the lease ordinance of the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCIA for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the borough of Highland Park in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease and agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds. Series 2019 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
And with this one, it's also, it's electronic vehicles, so we're gonna be getting some new electronic vehicles added to our fleet so we can have a cleaner environment and safer, cleaner energy. So, with that, I vote yes.
Councilman George?
Definitely yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
And, and I believe with this, our town has earned a special designation with a few other communities that have, that are committed to purchasing electronic vehicles for their own fleet. So, I vote yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to adopt, uh, the following items, number 15 through number 29?
30.
Oh, sorry, 30.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt resolution to approve a dedication by right, a request for outside employment for the off-duty municipal officers?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject Chapter 159 Municipal Court Alcohol, Education, Rehabilitation, and Enforcement Fund?
Motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
I am appointing Harry Pagannaman to the Commission of Immigration and Refugee Affairs. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wachovitz?
Yes.
Okay, I am appointing Coretta Pennelli as alternate number two to the planning board and Rebecca Hand as a Class Four to the planning board. At this point, we will open up for public discussion. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Bert Bueno, 308 Grant Avenue.
Could you say your name again?
Bert Bueno.
Okay. Got that.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, my garage is maybe two feet away from my next-door neighbor's garage. There are two trees there. They're on my, my side. One tree is actually raising the roof off of my garage. I came in to get a permit to have the tree taken down and it was, and the guy came out and it was approved. But what he told me is, after I pay to have the tree removed, I have to either plant a new tree or pay $450 to the town for the, for the tree commission. And I'm pretty outraged by that. It's in the back, 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 my garage is in the back, nobody can see it. I take unbelievable care of my property. It is beyond gorgeous. And for me to have to, I don't even have room to plant another tree. And I'm not willing to give the town $450 to take down a tree that's damaging my garage.
So I believe we have a tree replacement ordinance? Does somebody want to speak to that?
Mayor, we do have a tree replacement ord, ordinance which requires that there, there be a fee or, or an alternate replacement. However, I don't know off the top of my head whether the situation where there is a tree which is actually causing damage structurally, I have exactly the same problem with a sugar maple that's lifting the roof off part of, part of my garage. And I have not checked it either, but now it's on, on my list to check for both of us. Because I'm not sure whether that, that fee applies where, where the tree is actually causing damage to a structure. I don't know the answer to that.
So Councilman, Council President Phil George is the liaison to our Safe Walk, I'm sorry, our Shade Tree Commission? And they are the ones who would be working on the replacement of the tree, et cetera? So, I would suggest that, Phil, if you could get the contact information for the resident?
I will. I'm, I'm gonna look for the answer myself, because I have the same problem.
Awesome. And just as a little P.S., there's no room to put a tree in. It's, it's actually, I'm doing the town a favor by taking this tree out, because one day I'm gonna sell the house and my garage and my neighbor's garage is gonna be knocked down because of this tree. So I, I contact you?
I'll find out. If you, um, send me an email through the borough's website and I'll get the contact information. Now, holiday's coming up, so it may not be till next week.
Thank you very much.
Yes, John Valeri, 106 South Sixth Avenue. I have a question that's brought a lot of concern on my part, especially since I understand that the town is going green, which is great, but from where, from South Ninth Avenue on the Triangle Side to the Highland Park Edison border on Route 27, there aren't any garbage cans. There used to be garbage cans there, but there aren't any. Why?
Phil, that's by Public Works.
John, do you mean gar, garbage cans for people's garbage or you mean trash disposal for litter as people walk?
As, as litter, litter as people walk.
Part of the problem in that area, because we did discuss it at one time several years ago where there were some other safety concerns there, and when I was discussing it with DPW, when the police at our tri, traffic liaison at the time, is some of those sidewalks along 27 on this, on the Triangle Side are very narrow and there's no room to fit the, the standard, the, the trash cans that we have. As you know, they're rather large and solid. We have the double ones and then we have the cement ones with the liners inside. Some of the sidewalks, though, are below the current standard, which is a minimum of 42 and a supposed standard of 48 inches. Some of those sidewalks are as small as 32 inches wide, because they're very old.
Okay.
And that's, and that's why some of that stretch does not have them.
Okay, all right. The next question I have is, is because I understand that this town is very, very dog-friendly or just pet-friendly in general. And when I was in New Brunswick the other day, I actually saw a dispenser and disposable, um, you know, tool for, you know, cleaning up after your pet. You know, you, there was like a biodegradable bag. I understand we have a plastic bag, Ben, but, I mean, there was a biodegradable bag, you pull it, you clean up after your pet, you throw it in there, and that's it. Is there a way we could have those in Highland Park? And if we do, if we could have more of those?
So, so that has come up before. I'm actually looking at Councilman Fine, who, who, he himself raised that question. That's something, again, Phil, the Public Works Department, could they look into that?
We, we do have it in a plan. The native plant sanctuary has discussed it as well. The Boy Scouts actually wanted to do a project there. Part of the problem is disposing of animal, animal waste by DPW. But now, as you say, there are some newer systems that are biodegradable, before they weren't, and we're discuss, and we're, we're putting animal waste into regular municipal trash stream now. Is it done realistically? I can see people walking by my house and throwing it in my trash can on trash days. But the problem is not the system itself, the problem is the DPW being able to maintain them. And after a while, you run into a public safety problem where they accumulate. Now, I did happen to see when, after a meeting with DPW last week, I did happen to see online, I want to say it was Carmel in California that actually was premiering some kind of new disposable system. It looked like a pipe mount, like a canister mounted on a stand as opposed to the giveaway bags where you just pull the bag out.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna try and look that up, but the, the problem has not been installing the system, the problem has been maintaining and disposing of the system and allocating the time to do that. How many stations are you gonna put around town? You know, one of the biggest user areas is Donaldson and our section of Johnson, which is county.
Yeah.
So, we have looked at it, we do, we are aware of it, but some of the newer systems may change our thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker at 307 Magnolia. Bicycle helmets. I see lots of kids out of school, even toddlers, no helmets. What happened to that policy?
Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you want to address that?
Uh, the policy's still in effect. As a matter of fact, I spoke with the chief this afternoon and to talk about summer safety tips. And that's one of the things that we discussed, that they're gonna be putting out on Facebook and on the website. And, and a part of my report tonight was about summer safety and people, if they don't have a bicycle helmet, they can stop into our police department and they can get one at no cost. So they are available at no cost. I urge parents to please, when, before your child leave the home, that you have a responsibility for safety and you should ensure that your child wear his or her helmet. If they don't have one, one can be had at no cost at the police department. So, please, if you don't have one, stop to the police department and collect one.
Good, number one. There's the, the holiday week in between. I, according to my schedule, I put trash out today, because tomorrow there's no pickup and then there's on Friday. Am I right? The Wednesday and then on Friday, the recycling.
Yeah, Wednesday is, uh, South Side, Wednesday is recycling and Friday is garbage.
It would have been helpful, because a lot of students, foreigners, who are not familiar with the ordinances, if it had been publicized in some way. My neighbor, my neighbor just said, "You got the wrong day." I said, "No, you have the wrong day, because Thursday is a holiday and they don't pick up." So I would suggest that for future reference, that this be spouted a little bit and also...
We did make an attempt to get it out. It was on the website, it was on...
Facebook.
It was on Facebook, um, it's on Recycling Coach as well.
And also on the calendar that got sent out at the beginning of the year.
And, and just the rule of thumb is, the Wednesday is, is that extra day? So if there's, if there's ever a holiday during the week, Monday, Thursday, whatever day it might be, Wednesday is reserved for that extra pickup or whatever it is, whatever that holiday day, day would be.
Mrs. Bickhardt, also, we, you may recall the old refrigerator magnets we used to give out?
Yes.
They're now available in a bigger spreadsheet that shows the annual...
I have it.
Okay.
But my neighbors don't have it.
We'll get a stack over to you, maybe you can have it.
Now, it's, you know, everything is on television or on whatever you call those little toys that they have in their hands.
Your phone.
And sidewalk maintenance, which is a big issue. And now we've had a few days of rain and on my street, aside from the one where I got hurt, there are another two that have been elevated. I think unless the borrower takes a stand and either notifies the property owner, if I tell my neighbor, "You ought to fix this, it goes in one ear and out the other." But I think if you, if the borrower... I'm not telling them to punish them, but send out an order, a notification and give them a timeframe in which to do this.
Yeah.
Because many of them, the concrete part is in good condition. It's the soil underneath, when it gets wet, it swells up and then it rises and then you fall. And I'm impede because of this for the rest of my life.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be many more years than because of this.
Oh, God forbid.
But if I were 35, I could live in this for 35 years and it's uncomfortable.
Yeah, the, just so you know, our infrastructure five-year plan that was done a couple of years ago does indicate that we need to do another sidewalk program for 2020. It will probably be different from the ones we've had in the past, but Councilman George has some thoughts on that and he's been working on that.
Yes, we, we've been working on that plan for, for quite a while. We did a review of the program, which not a lot of people were popular with, although its theory was very good. So, we are looking to do that in 20, to hopefully roll something out in 2020. But we want to make sure that in-house as well as publicly, you know, going out to the public, that it is well thought out, that it is well engineered, that it is user-friendly, and that means the public, not the administration, but it can be administered, which means internally as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your neighbor.
Hi, Ruth Colton, 41 North Eighth Avenue, Highland Park. Highland Park is a community founded on respect for all its citizens, dedicated to a wholesome and healthy environment for all its residents, free of hate, bias... and healthy environment for all its residents, free of hate, bias, discrimination, and violence. I come to you today as a resident and an early childhood educator. We are currently being confronted by a breach in these principles, introduced by outside forces, non-Highland Park groups, dedicated to creating divisiveness, tension, and conflict in our quiet, friendly neighborhood, more ominously targeting our young toddlers, first learning their ABCs. I have been an educator in early childhood for forty years. I've read many alphabet books over the years. P is for Palestine. Appears on the surface to be a children's ABC book, complete with colorful illustrations. The main character is a smiling toddler, with rhyming and easy-to-read sentences set across each colorful page. In fact, it's a propaganda tool for indoctrinating young, impressionable children before they have the faculties for critical thinking. This is not appropriate for our young Highland Park children. The author of the book, Goldberg Baschi, who is supposed to be the presenter, is an avowed anti-Semite, hate monger, and BDS advocate. On May 9, 2019, in a tweet, she refers to Israel as racist, fascistic, settler colony built on the stolen land of another people. Her website, "A Hate-Mongering BDS Call to Arms," frosts with hostility with an aim to destroy the legitimate state of Israel, not just seeking a Palestinian state. In addition to being in direct conflict to what Highland Park stands for, it's in conflict with our First Amendment rights and the Highland Park Municipal Library, our own vision, mission, and strategy. Consistent with the First Amendment, a library may not censor a book based on viewpoint, but it may restrict its reading to children if it finds it to be inappropriate for that audience. As a limited public forum, the Highland Park Library has discretion over the content of material it offers, so long as the censorship is viewpoint-neutral and is for the purpose that the forum was created. Certainly a book designed to begin the process of indoctrinating the young in hatred and death of innocents, those they kill and those they teach martyrdom to, is not for our Highland Park children. The Highland Park Library aspires to be the place where the community gathers to enrich their lives. Our community trusts the library to deepen their experiences in a multitude of ways. This is the opposite of that vision. The Highland Park Library opens its doors for our community to access information and expand their imagination. Introducing a one-sided narrative, dissent conflict, and justifiable murder to toddlers with untrained minds for critical thinking is not expanding their imagination, certainly not in a healthy way. A library is a place for lifelong learning. Can the library want to teach our youngest learners that the murder of women and children in buses, pizza stores, on the way home from school, on the way to the supermarket is okay, beginning the path to lifelong learning? We, the concerned members of the Highland Park community, shouldn't have groups outside the Highland Park community introduce that type of divisiveness in our community, shouldn't accept introducing our young, impressionable children with antisemitism, as it solely targets Jews in their historical homeland, regardless of anyone's political feelings about this foreign conflict, and shouldn't have our tax dollars used to teach hatred and divisiveness. I beseech the council to not allow the Highland Park Municipal Library, as a separate but related institution, to promote this. There's a process for introducing and examining potentially controversial activities in our Highland Park. This does not appear to have been followed. This should be stopped now on both procedural and specificity grounds. It should also never happen again, and we would like this further established by the council. I give a hoot about Highland Park.
Lisa Ben Chaim, 436 South Fifth Avenue. I've been a Highland Park resident for about eighteen years, and I am, have been, I should say, an avid and dedicated patron of the Highland Park Public Library. Unfortunately, no more. I feel betrayed. I am angered, disappointed, saddened by what has happened with the schedule of the scheduled children's reading of P is for Palestine. I'm both disappointed mainly with the Board of Trustees at the Highland Park Public Library, and also the council for whatever part has not been played in, taking part in rectifying the situation. So let's look at the book P is for Palestine. As was said before, it is presented as a children's ABC book, but in reality, it is the author's tool for spreading her anti-Israel, anti-Zionist propaganda. There are various and many examples. Some are blatant, some are a little less blatant, but they are there. First of all, let's start with her H is for Handela. Handela is this little character, cartoon character that was created by this illustrator, and he states on, he's no longer alive, but on his website, it states that it is, was created to represent the resistance and defiance based on Israel's occupation. It is, has become the face, the logo, of the BDS movement, which is bent on the destruction of Israel and the people of Israel. It is also seen in various popular anti-Israel, anti-Semi cartoons, which are very violent in nature. There's also, if we look at G is for Gaza. It, very innocuous, very, it looks like a great picture. It's children flying kites on the shores, and it looks very innocent. But in reality, if you look on any news site, or do any Google search, what you will find are Palestinian children flying kites, as well as Palestinian adults, flying kites with incendiary devices attached to the kites into Israel, to destroy not only physically our property, the Israel property, but causing fear amongst the Israelis. That is their goal. So this innocent-looking picture, if you see it, and then you look at a picture online or any news site, you will see that that is, it is very subliminal, but in reality, it's terrifying. The other thing is, and we could talk about I is for Intifada, which is the page for, that has brought all the notoriety. Again, the author is trying to make it sound like it is them rising up, but in reality, it is the violence and terror that it strikes in the hearts of Israelis and Americans and Jews across the world. What I'm asking here, there are many others, specifically, and I want to bring this one up, she, Baschi states that the, in the book, there are various illustrations showing what she calls a peace sign, because it's all about peace. But again, it is blatantly propaganda, because what do we know? It is V for victory. Again, you will find picture after picture of not just Palestinian adults, but Palestinian children showing V is for victory after what they call successful terror attacks in Israel against innocent Israeli civilians living their life. So what am I asking here for? This book has, this book reading, and I'm talking specifically about the reading, has no place in Highland Park that prides itself that hate has no home here. It has no place, this reading has no place for children. This has no place to be read by an author who proposes an hate. I'm asking the council to use whatever authority you have to influence the board, to cancel, not just postpone, or to cancel this reading, because you represent this, the whole community of Highland Park. And while I am not specifically sure of what true authority you have over the board, you do have authority over our tax dollars that go to them, and they have no right to be scheduling this reading using our tax dollars when it is in a community that does not allow hate.
Mark Colton, 41 North Eighth Avenue, Highland Park. Unfortunately, P is for Palestine, I is for Intifada is a subterfuge. Timport, an antisemitic death culture via Palestinian textbook education. A 2016 study that was orchestrated in response to US State Department request indicated that young children are being indoctrinated and propagandized from an early age. Delegitimization, there's no justification of Israel's existence. Jews, not Israelis, have no historical, geographical, religious association with the ancient land of Israel. I suspect something that Abraham Moses, King David Jesus, Vespasian, Marx, Zoroastrian would have some problems with. Demonization, Jews, a term more often used than Israelis, are the root of all evil, not just in Palestine, or the so-called Zionist entity. Among the examples is an image of a girl smiling at heretics being burned, and poem calling to annihilate the remnants of the foreigners after eliminating the usurpers. Intifada, a form of jihad, and martyrdom are means of the Jews' annihilation, again, the term Jews. Advocacy of violent struggle, this is to be accomplished via jihad, Intifada is a form of jihad, and ultimately martyrdom with removal of Jews, not just so-called Israelis, from the Mediterranean to Jordan River. The Palestinian Authority textbooks for the first to fourth grades, our beloved Highland Park Library audience, demonizes Israel and glorifies martyrdom. A textbook passage reads, "I shall sacrifice my blood to saturate the land." Is this a suitable message for a nine-year-old, our nine-year-olds, or even younger children in Highland Park, as they're taught about Palestine and Intifada in an ABC book? These hate and murder findings have caused the EU, and the Foreign Policy Chief Federico Mogherini, to make a statement in May that there's going to be an investigation, they're going to hold back funds from the Palestinian Authority. In the PA curriculum, there's no confusion between martyrdom through Intifada, and the children should embrace martyrdom. It's important to understand that what P is for Palestine, I is for Intifada, is trying to covertly import under the guise of a purported First Amendment right, is a community, in a community-funded and guided public library. Let me give you some examples, and Intifada plays a strong role here. A first-grade text has an illustration of a seventh verse of the first sur of the Quran, fundamentally questions following the image encourage children to apply this verse to the people currently surrounding them, the people evoking God's anger interpreted as Jews, and those who are astray as being Christians. In this particular thing, a little girl smiling, an image of the infidels burning in hell. In another first-grade textbook, violent struggle is introduced as militaristic conquest, and glorified as these six-year-olds learn the Arabic letters. In a third-grade math exercise, martyrdom is glorified, and the teacher asks students to read a phrase containing the number of martyrs in the first Intifada, and then to write the correct number in the second Intifada. There's no mistake what Intifada is about. In another third-grade language class aimed at eight-year-olds, a violent poem is taught that the liberation of all of Palestine, including elimination of Israel, requires sacrificing blood to move the enemy from the land by eliminating the usurper to annihilate the remnants of the foreigners. In a chapter about bravery to Islamists taught to fifth graders, it said, "The acts of bravery by the Prophet and his companion are linked to the bravery of present-day Palestinian martyrs, dying trying to kill Israeli civilians, celebrating children dying as martyrs in both Intifadas." In a fifth-grade text on history, martyrdom is encouraged and described positively as a fuel that fed the Intifada and gave it the power to go on. In a ninth-grade textbook, the solution to Gaza's population density is resettling the Gaza population in Israel proper, and martyrdom at the Gaza-Israel border is to be applauded with glorification, and martyrs is used to teach grammar. For eleventh grades, the praiseworthiness of killing innocent civilians is incorporated in the readings and expression of advanced Arabic classroom exercise. A poem titled "The Intifada's Martyrs," glorifying death and Palestinian martyrs, is framed against the first Intifada, and is accompanied by a photograph of dozens of Palestinian suicide bombers who were successful or attempted to kill Israelis. Eleven, twelve-grade text makes it clear that their hate is not of Israelis, but Jews. Jews are described as the sinful and liars, turning their back on the Prophet to be punished, doomed to destruction, both in the past and in the future, by Allah's servant, and killed if they own Arab lands, with martyrs more honorable than us all. Note, its reference is to Jews, not Israelis, or the term used in the Quran, the children of Israel. I must wonder, if this book reading was in urban America, or the deep south, and the word blacks, negroes, or worse was used instead of Jews, what the council's reaction would be? Young, impressionable children of Highland Park are not being treated to an innocuous alphabet book, whose objective is to broaden their minds. The attempt is to instill a poison seed in our children, which perhaps one day will sprout one or a handful of new Shaheeds, martyrs, from Highland Park across the United
Henry Shanzo, 29 Brookville Road, Edison, but a Highland Park taxpayer. I add my voice to protest the rescheduling of any presentation by Goldberg Baschi to the children of our community, where the presentation is under the auspices of our municipal library, which is supported by our tax dollars, and which would give credence to our unabashed, antisemitic, and pro-BDS views. Ms. Baschi has expressed her views very clearly. By way of example, and was cited earlier, on May 9 of this year, in a tweet, she refers to Israel as "a racist, fascistic settler colony built on the stolen land of another people." Note the words, racist, fascistic, settler colony, stolen land of another people. A year earlier, on May 2018, Baschi tweeted at Matt Romney, "Your shameless support of the genocidal apartheid state of Israel is the epitome of bigotry." Her shameless and baseless attack on Israel as genocidal, reminiscent of the actions of the Nazis, which is an affront and an insult to all of us, some of us, such as I, who survived the Holocaust and lost parents in the Holocaust. And then she refers to Israel as an apartheid state, reminiscent of the South African segregation segregation... system. This is mutterously fraught in view of the fact, there are Jews and Arabs in the Israel government. Arabs own and work in shops, malls, restaurants, and hospitals throughout the Jewish state. Arabs can walk freely and safely anywhere in Israel. It doesn't take a genius to realize that this is not apartheid. Israel is a democracy, and calling Israel an apartheid state or a genocidal state is racist. It is anti-Semitic. It is wrong, and it is just plain false. And clearly, Bashy is the bigot. In sharp contrast, in sharp contrast to her views, the Palestinian Authority landlords prohibit Palestinians selling Palestinian-owned lands to any Israeli or anybody connected to Israel under penalty of death. Unless we question the extent, this has also been extended by various Islamic groups to Christians. But it is Israel that Bashy called genocidal, apartheid, and racist. Bashy's personal website displays and describes a proud support for BDS. She proudly states, "I am a proud Persian mama, and I boycott Israel-supported sadar foods, part of my commitment to boycott divestments and sanction BDS movement." It is no secret that BDS is a movement dedicated to the destruction of Israel and which our own New Jersey Senate rejected unanimously just three years ago as being anti-Semitic and which we should likewise reject. Highland Park prides itself on the motto, "There is no place for hate here." So is Bashy who proudly proclaimed her hatred the type of person who should be invited to speak to our children in our library? The answer should be a resounding no. No self-respecting group and no self-respecting liberal can allow the scandalous preverter of the truth to speak to our children. The council should use its authority to demand the Highland Park Public Library Board of Trustees to hold all further book-reading considerations while it investigates the author, her political views, social media statements, and make a determination on both the book and her fitness to read a book to our Highland Park children.
I'm here to speak about the reading of P is for Palestine to children at our library. I speak on my own behalf as a Jewish resident of Highland Park and not for any organization or synagogue. Let's assume for a minute there is a local group promoting a children's book on white culture. Assume that this group receives active support from the Ku Klux Klan, that the book emphasizes the gentility, chivalry, and family orientation of white antebellum plantation society, and that it completely ignores the problem of slavery. Let's assume further that an employee of our library scheduled that book for a reading to the five-year-old children of our town, and then the library ratified that decision. Would we tolerate this? Would the African-American citizens of Highland Park not be justifiably outraged? Would it not be completely reasonable and morally justified to demand that their reading be canceled and that the hate group promoting it be condemned? Well, substitute supporters of Israel, the Jewish state, for African-Americans, and we have the same problem. Jewish Voice for Peace Central Jersey, which sponsors hate and is mostly non-Jewish, arranged for the reading of a book that promotes the agenda of Hamas. Our library board, be it perhaps grudgingly, then approved it. The boycott Israel operation was orchestrated in significant part by a person named Yu Shu, who is a Students for Justice in Palestine leader, who is also active in Jewish Voice for Peace Central Jersey. He and this JVP group are supported by the terrorist-connected NGO Samidoun, S-A-M-I-D-O-U-N. Look them up and check out their terrorist videos on the internet. Their US director is Joe Katron, who is affiliated with the terrorist group People's Front for the Liberation of Palestine. The German government has declared the boycott of Israel, that movement anti-Semitic. And yet, this is what we invited to read at our library. These are the same people that harass and intimidate Jewish students on college campuses and shut down the speech of pro-Israel students. And then like cowards, they hide behind the First Amendment and claim their First Amendment rights are being impacted. I call upon the council members here as individuals and as respected members of this community to ask the library board members to reverse their decision. And I call upon the churches in this town, especially the one that has given Jewish Voice for Peace a meeting place, to urge the library board to banish hate from our community. All over Highland Park, there are signs on lawns promoting, proclaiming, "Hate has no home here." Let us live up to that slogan and not make a joke of it.
Michael Atkin, 117 North Eighth Avenue. Just want to mention that I have two young children, age seven and a half and nine, who frequent the library, and I'm very concerned about this scheduled reading of P is for Palestine. The library's, Highland Park Library's 2019 to 2021 strategic plan has a vision, mission, and lifelong learning on their plan. The vision is a community's trusted forum for enrichment and engagement. Mission is opening doors to information and imagination. And lifelong learning, the library programs and services enhance the quality of life in the community by tapping into curiosities and helping to increase knowledge and vitality. We value community education and personal enrichment at all life stages. The library's vision states that the community's trusted forum for enrichment and engagement. Our vision is what we hope to achieve for our community. We aspire to be a place where the community gathers to enrich their lives. Our communities trust the library to deepen their experiences in a multiple, in a multitude of ways. The reading of this book would do the exact opposite of this vision. The library's mission states, first and foremost, we believe that we open doors to our community to access information and expand their imagination through programs, resources, and collections. This is the opposite of that mission by introducing an unbalanced, one-sided narrative, dissent conflict, and justifiable murder to toddlers with untrained minds for critical thinking. It's not expanding their imagination, certainly not in a healthy way. Library's strategic direction, lifelong learning, optimization resources, and organizational strength. Can the library really want to teach toddlers that the murder of women and children in buses, pizza stores on the way to home from school or on the way to the supermarket is okay? Is that beginning the path to lifelong learning? Right now, if the library continues on its current path, it will go from good to disastrous. The community will only learn about the library negatives. It will shun this library and be sure to keep its children away from the library. In summary, we say to Highland Park Council, this reading has no business being read to the young and impressionable who still lack the power of critical thinking. It's opposite, opposite the community mission as it fosters hate, death, and antisemitism. Has found the wrong forum. Whatever the merits of Israel-Palestinian conflict, whatever side one might be on, our community library should not be used to plant seeds of hatred in the minds of our toddlers. Is not consistent with the library bill of rights, which speaks to the issue of books and other library resources that provide for the interest, information, and enlightenment of its patrons. This provides darkness to those too young to challenge that darkness. This is not a First Amendment issue. Opposition to the book's reading is not predicated on the author's viewpoint, but the legitimization of the use of violence for conflict resolution, which is inappropriate reading material for minors. Consistent with the First Amendment, a library may not censor a book based on viewpoint, but it may restrict its reading to children if it finds it to be inappropriate for that audience. As a limited public forum, the Highland Park Public Library has discretion over that content and material it offers, so long as the censorship, so long as the censorship is viewpoint-neutral and is for the purpose that that forum was created. Thank you.
Thank you. Honey, before you start, council members, we recently went over, we were asked to review the rules of order, and we are supposed to vote on extending this portion of the meeting beyond nine o'clock when we want to do that. So I'm asking for a motion to extend this meeting beyond nine o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Except for the mayor, I'm sorry, I have to leave.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Honey Wazatski, 54 North Seventh Avenue, Highland Park. Even the most superficial review of Bashy and her book reveals that Bashy is not acceptable to any reasonable audience as she is a rabid, anti-Israel, pro-BDS bigot. And her book is directed to propagandize a one-sided version of history aimed at propagating hatred and conflict. In view of Bashy's one-sided, highly prejudiced view, it is inappropriate that she be invited or scheduled to speak to children who cannot differentiate or appreciate her one-sided presentation. Considering the children and the fair and measured education to which they should be rightfully subjected, there is no reasonable basis for scheduling a Bashy reading. The library is a public institution supported by taxpayer money. Taxpayer money cannot be used for pushing a particular viewpoint. The library is a quasi-government body, and inviting a speaker gives the speaker an aura of approval, respectability, and authority. Children have a right to be protected from false, unethical, and/or obscene material and presentations. The First Amendment anti-establishment provision is designed to prevent any show of favoritism of any group. So Bashy threats, and the threats of her supporters, to initiate a lawsuit, riots, and mayhem should not deter our resolve to do what is right.
Hi, my name is Susie Wolf.
Could you move the microphone up for you?
Okay, better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my name is Susie Wolf. I live 128 North Eighth Avenue. I've lived in Highland Park for 30 years with my husband and four children, who spent a lot of time at the library. I would like to say how upset I am that the library has agreed to allow Goldberg Bashy to read P is for Palestine at our library. I don't know whether it was a mistake by someone at the library who did not do their due diligence vetting this author and this book, or if there's an employee or volunteer in the library who is pushing the anti-Israel, pro-BDS agenda, which is even more scary to me. Our library is supposed to be a safe, non-political location and not a place where I have to worry about being openly a Jew and a Zionist. Jewish Voice for Peace decided to push and sponsor this reading in Highland Park, not in Borden Town, not in Piscataway, because this town, which has a sizable Jewish population, and knew they would get the publicity that they're looking for. Bashy proudly declares her support of Jewish Voice for Peace and other anti-Israel groups on social media sites, including her live Facebook feed. Videos in her Facebook page are painful to watch. In these various postings, we see how JVP is her sponsor of the reading and how delighted she is of anti-Zionist American progressives. She tweets about her support of BDS, which is a group that is dedicated to the destruction of the state of Israel. Her book, P is for Palestine, is obviously anti-Semitic, as you've heard, and anti-Israel, and advocates violence against Israel and should not be read to children. But even if she was reading Frog and Toad to the book in the children in the library, how could the library have agreed to host such a person in our library? The library and the council especially, if Jews for Peace of Central New Jersey continues to claim that they are co-sponsors of the Goldberg Bashy library event, should investigate further this author and her political views and stop the hosting of this children's program in our library. Thank you.
My name is Max Wazatski. I live at 54 North Seventh Avenue in Highland Park. I've lived in that home since 1968, so I've been a resident and taxpayer of Highland Park for 51 years. In the years that I lived here, Highland Park has been an ideal town to live in and bring up our children. Unfortunately, the saddest spectacle I've witnessed in all these years is the one unfolding before us in this library fiasco. An outside group, apparently with the cooperation of library officials, placed a children's program on the agenda before it could be adequately reviewed for suitability. The program was at best controversial and at worst highly offensive to many Highland Park residents. However, once it was put on the agenda, it became a fait accompli and was very hard to remove. I found this whole sordid episode very disturbing, and since the library is an agency of Highland Park funded in part by taxpayer dollars, I would like to ask what the role of the council is in events like these. Without knowing exactly how the council was involved here, I am willing to give you the benefit of the doubt and concede that you did not anticipate this type of reaction. However, having said that, that still begs the question of what procedures are in place to monitor agencies receiving tax dollars to ensure that they adequately serve the taxpayer's interests. A conflict playing out 7,000 miles away has already infiltrated our local library. So how can we be sure that another one like it won't happen again? Program selections are judgment calls, but they should be made after open discussion or legal proceedings so that events like politicizing children's programs in the library, using our toddlers as pawns, are not made again. Individuals must be held accountable for anything they do that reflects poorly on our community. I trust the council does not give agencies like the library money as a blank check and then lets them do anything they want to do without any oversight. As residents, I think we are entitled to expect suitable transparency, oversight, and accountability of our tax dollars for both the Borough Council and the library board. Thank you.
So I'm going to hold comments till, hold my comments until you're all done.
Leon Haller, 334 North Fifth Avenue. I'm a resident of Middlesex County for 36 years and a resident of Highland Park for 26 years. When I bought my house in Highland Park, it was the remnants of the old Cox mansion before I had it torn down and rebuilt. About two weeks after I bought it, I went inside, and there was sw-. About two weeks after I bought it, I went inside, and there were swastikas painted in red, and the words "Jews Get Out" sprayed painted in the house. It was in the local papers at the time. That was 26 years ago, and it's still etched in my mind. It is but a mere 74 years since the end of World War II and the end of the Shoah, the Holocaust. One-third of my people were destroyed. My mother's family was wiped out, together with 6 million Jews, and millions more undesirables, to use the term loosely, and yes, I do have a Holocaust mentality. We Jews coined the term "never again." Never again will my people be gassed, burnt, led to slaughter, had their property confiscated, and buried in mass graves. We are the remnants of what was the great diaspora throughout the European world of stedts, cities, towns, villages, that became ghettos, slave labor camps, death camps, concentration camps, and I say loudly with all my might, "Never again!" Never again will we allow what began in Germany. The haters' attacks were carefully coordinated in stages. The first stage: attack inanimate objects, cars, buildings, windows, businesses. The second stage: defacing headstones, the dead can't fight back. The third stage: verbal abuse, either in person or through the media. The fourth stage: bodily attacks, physical attacks on Jews. The fifth stage: murder and random killings. And the sixth stage: mass murder. At the present time, we are in the early stages of Jew hatred in our midst. Let's kill it and bury it before its evil head can rise again. In Europe, our synagogues need protection. This is now the new reality in America, since the Pittsburgh and San Diego attacks and murders by white supremacists. In New York City, cars, buildings, Jewish businesses, and headstones are being defaced with swastikas and graffiti. In New Brunswick, New Jersey, our Polatsetic Cemetery was defaced, and headstones were thrown down and smashed several years ago. Well, my friends and council members, hatred is now encroaching in our own neighborhood. P for Palestine, and I for Intifada, as well as other letters of the alphabet written by a known Jew hater and BDS supporter, Goldberg Bashi, must be stopped in its tracks. It lends credibility to a hate monger and tries to corrupt our youth by instilling hate and violence in their fragile minds. Golda Meir once said, "When the Palestinians learn to love their children more than they hate us, then there will be peace." What kind of people indoctrinate their children through UNRWA-funded schools to hate their neighbors, their cousins, through textbooks, plays, simulations, cartoons, social media? Bashi is one of those that want to now infiltrate our school, our children, our community with her hate-filled trash. I would like to turn the table slightly and offer a different slant on some of the ABCs. P is for the pogroms in Europe that killed thousands of Jews for no reason. I is for the Inquisition in Spain and Portugal that killed, tortured, and maimed thousands more Jews for no reason. H is for Hitler, Yomach Shemo, whose name will live forever in infamy for all the atrocities committed. F is for Farrakhan, another spurer of Jew hatred. M-L is for Martin Luther, who was a Jew hater and the catalyst and hero of Hitler. Mein Kampf was inspired by the Luther doctrines. Martin Luther destroyed the Jews of Mainz, Worms, Speyer, Michaelstadt, and the Rhineland, a mere several hundred years ago. The Jews were given a choice, convert or die. Most were thrown into the Rhine River and perished. So I ask, do we want to go down this path again? Do we want to bring hate in our midst? Do we need to educate our children and others in baseless hatred? I say no to Bashi coming to our community. There are lawn signs all over Highland Park, "Hate has no place here," with nice symbols of different religions on them. Are those signs for real? Will we let our guard down once again, and the masses be steamrolled over by the few? Let's do the right thing. Let's cancel the Bashi hate tour. Let's say no to hate in our community and the world. Never again!
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. I've listened to all the gentlemen here, all the ladies, and all her comments on prejudice and bigotry. Well, let me tell you something, ladies and gentlemen. The veterans of the United States of America has been fighting prejudice and bigotry for many, many years. Our cemeteries, Arlington, the unknown soldiers, your brothers, your sisters, your sons, your daughters of this country, we've been fighting all this prejudice and bigotry. But I've yet to hear everybody and anybody to come up here and say, "We are going to support the veterans of the United States of America."
I'll support.
Good. When you say you're going to fight, I'm putting my remarks also to the ladies and gentlemen that are watching this on TV. When you say that you are going to fight for the United States of America, and you're going to support the veterans of the United States of America, coast to coast, state to state, city to city, then I will say that you are fighting prejudice, and you are fighting bigotry. Get behind the veterans of the United States of America. Support our programs, and then you'll be doing something for your sons and daughters and your families. Support the veterans. Fight this prejudice and bigotry that's going on. It's more prevalent today than it was 50 years ago. It's all talk. I urge everybody, support your veterans. We have programs. And I am ready to support anybody in this audience right now that wants to support the veterans. We will fight prejudice and bigotry.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Okay, so I just want to, are you coming up to speak?
Rabbi Dr. Bernard Rosenberg. I live a few minutes from the library. Just to give you a little bit of background, and I take this extremely personally. My oldest child was almost murdered in the first Intifada, when she was in the yeshiva, and we had to bring her home, as the car she was in was attacked and sprayed with bullets.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Rabbi, but we need your address for the...
5 Fairhill Road, Edison, New Jersey.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My wife and I were almost murdered in a Sparrow restaurant, which was during the Intifada, and I ended up picking up body parts, because in the Jewish tradition, you try to bury people with all their parts, so I was doing that for quite a while. I am certain that all of you agree with all the eloquent statements that were made tonight. That's obvious. But I see on your face, I may be wrong, the concern of lawsuits. That's what I see. Now, the only reason I agreed to the canceling of the original meeting for the library, and in fact, I communicated to the mayor through her representative, was not necessarily because people would be hurt, but because, what was the point? They were going to have this massive meeting, people would be hurt, and I had a feeling because of a fear of lawsuit that they would go ahead anyway. The problem seems to me, at least, to be with the library. If anyone should be sued, it should be the library. How can you vet Adolf Hitler and not do any research on Adolf Hitler? And that's what they did. That's exactly what they did. So the fault lies with them. Now, my solution is very simple. I would book her as a speaker for 50 years from now. That's what I would do, 50 years from now. In fact, every time they want to come, I would say, "Yeah, we're going to book you 50 years from now." I don't know what the lawsuit could be on booking you 50 years from now. Now, you had mentioned that you had all these people ready for violence. Now, I personally was threatened. I'm threatened quite a bit, so it doesn't bother me. The chief of police asked me if I was threatened, and I said, "Yes." Your chief of police, I reported it to Edison. But I, if you remember, I'm the one with my wife who was attacked years ago, walking to shul and back. My congregation Bethel had swastikas on it, and so we've seen this before. But I can promise you something, that if you think you had to get ambulances ready for that meeting, I can tell you, you're going to have to do the same thing if she speaks. Now, I'm not threatening anybody. I'm the one who's been threatened. I'm in a wheelchair. I can walk to my car, which is a block away. I'm going to be there, in my wheelchair with a cane, so I can hit somebody. I will take a bullet. Now, I'm a product of the Holocaust, and you've heard "never again." I will take a bullet. Now, I would probably be, because everybody knows who I am, the first target of someone hurting, and I'm willing to do that, because "never again" means never again. So my solution is very simple. Don't worry about the lawsuit. Just book her 50 years from now, and keep it rolling and rolling and rolling. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So first, I want to thank everyone for coming out and expressing their point of view, but I also want to express, I'll speak for myself. I do know that myself and many of the council people were also quite surprised when we heard about this event even being scheduled. We do not learn of every single event that's being planned at the library until it is published. Councilman Fine is actually the council's liaison to the library. I was quite appalled to learn that there was no procedure in place for reviewing any programs that go on at the library. There was no procedure in place. We have demanded of them that they put a procedure in place, and Councilman Fine had a board meeting of the library last week, I think it was, and they have put together a subcommittee to put together a procedure. I don't know how they existed for so long without any procedures in place, but they So, you know, there's no lawsuit that's preventing us, at least here on the governing body, from thinking about what to do. We will be working with the library moving forward. They are their own board. We cannot tell them what to do, but to the point of many people who express themselves here today, we do have a say, and I'm sure Josh, as the representative, is going to voice that say to them on a regular basis. I'm going to ask, I know that Councilman Hale and Councilman Fine have been working on these discussions for quite some time, and I want to give them the opportunity to speak if they'd like to. You don't have to.
So I would just say one thing, just to reiterate something which was stated by the president of the Library Board Trustees at the Monday, June 24 meeting, just for clarity, because I know that meeting was not taped, but Bruce Tucker did get up after all the public comment, and he made it clear that the program was never a Jewish Voice for Peace program, that an individual had brought the book to a librarian, and after it was scheduled and then postponed, that's when that individual came back and said, basically, made the present it as though the organization she belonged to had sponsored the program. The president said that, again, it was never a Jewish Voice for Peace sponsored program, even though there obviously is connection in relation to that, as we know, to the organization, and it won't be going forward. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Councilman Hale, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to add my thanks to everybody who came out tonight to speak so passionately and eloquently about this issue. Believe me, we understand the pain that this has caused in our community, and we are working very diligently as a council, as individuals, to address this issue. And so we certainly do appreciate all of the voices that we heard tonight, and so thank you very much for all of that.
I also want to allow any other councilperson to speak if they'd like to. Okay. Then, may I have a motion to adj... Oh, did you have a comment?
No questions.
Questions?
Public session is still going?
Well, I was going to come out of it, since it appeared that the discussion was over, but if you want to ask something, I didn't close public discussion.
Lois Lebing, North Second Avenue. On a lighter note, handicap parking sets minimum standards, both to the lady who left a long time ago. Both state and federal ADA have minimum standards, one parking, handicap parking for every 25 spaces, minimum.
Right.
Anyone can ask for more. If a complex hasn't enough, ask. If the Stop &amp; Shop hasn't enough, it's always filled, ask for more. They should be able to accommodate that. The tree ordinance, anyone who's read those 100 pages will find somewhere there's a clause for safety. There is no cost to residential tree removal for safety reasons. That, to me, it strikes me as safety, especially with the neighbors building or the trees involved. Deer count, anyone who goes to the library will find those newspapers in the freebie section as soon as you walk in on the right. I think it's called "The Gardener." At the bottom of the front page, I wish I brought my copy today, some company will come and spray and guarantee to remove your deer, and it's not available in stores, so they have some sort of a special chemical that you might consider telling residents about. And Catalina Island, it was shown, some travel network, I happened to catch, that back in the 20s, because of a movie set, there were over 600 bison, well, bison were brought over for a movie, black and white, it must have been, in the 20s. The herd grew to 600 head. It's down to 120. They're actually letting it go to 150 bison on Catalina Island, California, but the females are darted with birth control. We don't have to slaughter females and babies in Edison and Piscataway, as was discussed. And going back, six mayors, back to Hesh Berman, when I have attended on and off. Number one, it's colder in here until a little while ago than it is in January reorg meeting. We all have sweaters or jackets, or most of us. I ask you to consider changing the public session to be the long one first, the unlimited session, and then do your jobs, because you're going to be here anyhow.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Kalidra Hadhazy, South Second Avenue. I know that tonight we passed these zoning overlay, and I was very late this evening because I had to work, but I wanted to take this opportunity to actually come and thank the Borough Council and to thank the mayor. Thank you for encouraging the residents to attend the planning board meeting. It was really eye-opening, and we learned a lot in that meeting. One of the things that we learned in that meeting is that the council took our concerns and considerations seriously, and not only did you take them seriously, but you took them with you to the negotiating... them with you to the negotiating table, and we really appreciate that. We appreciate the concessions that were made on that building. We appreciate that there is a height restriction on the building, and that there's been some efforts to expand the buffer on the outside. I know that it's not 100% perfect, and I know that 100% of the people aren't 100% happy, but I spoke at the last council meeting and said that as long as everyone was treated fairly, everyone wouldn't be happy, but they would feel like they were treated fair, and I feel like you have treated us fairly, and you have listened. Thank you.
Thank you, Kalitra. Okay. Everybody's staying in their seats? Nobody else is coming up to talk? I can adjourn to conference? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to conference?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.